Welcome, everybody, to the Rye Town Council Meeting of August 21st, 2018. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please maintain standing. Heavenly Father, bless this assemblage, grant us the wisdom to make every decision fair-minded and in the best interest for all its residents. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Sure. Counselperson Lindsey Jackson.
Here.
Counselperson Thomas Nardi.
Here.
Counselperson Jill Axelrod.
Here.
Counselperson Anthony Baxter.
Here.
And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Here. First item is adoption of the minutes of July 17th, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on. Next item is a Vision Government Solutions Resolution. Debbie, do you want to just tell us briefly what this is about, please?
Yes, this is the next step in our revale process. We, in order, we've had our kickoff meeting with our revale company this week, and in order for them to do their work, we have to get a complete set of sketches with which they can work. And in order to do that, we have to buy them from Vision Government Services. So this is a one-time expense for $12,500, I believe, to-
$12,400.
$400, thank you, to obtain a complete set of our property sketches.
Yeah. For some reason, the claim is that the sketches are owned by Vision and not by the town. So unfortunately, we are forced to purchase them ourselves. A motion, any questions? Motion and a second, please.
I just, I'm sorry. This is the first step, sort of, we hired the revale company now, this is sort of-
I'm having trouble hearing you.
This is our first step in the whole revale process and getting it really parsed down and putting-
Yes.
-all that planning into action.
It's, sure, it's the next step, right? We have our monitor, we have our revale company, we've had our kickoff meeting, we have a whole timeline, and the next thing is getting them all the-
Last month, we did the consultant, the monitor, yes, so now we're moving forward.
This is the hardware part, getting physical things. We've had a motion and a second. Please call the roll, Hope.
I don't think we did.
Didn't we have a motion and a second?
No.
Oh, that's right, Lindsey interrupted me.
I'm sorry.
A motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please, Hope.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter.
Yes.
Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. The next item is a resolution wherein the town of Rye is urging the state legislature to reform the tax surcherary proceedings. One of the problems in the tax surcherary field for the municipalities is that very often, commercial property owners do not file a note of issue, meaning putting the tax cert case on the calendar until four years have elapsed. That allows the tax years to pile up and often results in settlements covering not just the four years, but five, six, seven, or eight years, because each year is a separate filing. This measure urges the state legislature to amend, I'll read this from the resolution, "I resolve that the Rye Town Council calls upon the state legislature to amend New York's real property tax law, section 718, by reducing the current four-year time to file a note of issue in tax surcherary proceedings to two years, and further resolve that the town council calls upon the legislature to take any further legislative steps it deems prudent in fixing the inequities of the present property tax grievance procedure set forth in New York's real property tax law." So that's the nub of it all. Comments?
Well, I just wanted to, I know this was an issue at the last meeting, and I just want to thank Gary because he took really swift and definitive action on this. Tax certs, especially of commercial properties, have been particularly damaging to our local municipalities. School Board is also impacted, Village is also impacted, so this is really going to help everyone stay on track, prevent any huge multimillion-dollar surprises in budgeted, budgets in the near future. I did want to follow up, and I don't know which other communities are impacted, I mean, we've had some major cases that we, Rye Town has been, you know, impacted, Village of Portchester, Village of Rybrook, and the subsequent school districts. As far as getting other municipalities on task, because I know we're kind of groundbreaking with this request, have we reached out to, like, the New York Association of Towns or the Westchester Municipal Officials, or is that-
Well, we've, we will reach out further. I've had discussions over the last year with Assemblyman Otis about this issue, and I've had more recent discussions with our new state senator, Shelley Mayer, and obviously there's been discussion within the town of Rye, Village of Rybrook, the school districts, the Village of Portchester, about doing something. This is a specific action that we feel is important in doing something about the refunds that have been given over the years in tax surcherary proceedings. Just to call attention, I was interviewed by the Westmore News last week, and they wrote an article, Sarah, Sarah the reporter, Sarah the reporter, wrote an excellent article outlining the steps that the town is taking to address the entire tax cert issue. This is one of them. Another one, as we just alluded to in the last resolution, is to do a complete revaluation of property, because at the base of it all is whether or not the properties are properly assessed. That's the key. Another, another aspect is looking at the Board of Assessment and Review process, which is the initial process, and I've, Denise, the assessors here, we discussed this earlier this week, and I've discussed it with the town attorney and the tax cert attorney, as to how we can make that process more efficient in terms of getting the petitioners at that early stage to present real value estimates of the, of the, of the worth of the property, because many of the practitioners before the Board of Assessment and Review treat that as merely a stepping stone to get into court, whether it's the Supreme Court part that handles the commercial cases, or the SCAR part, Small Claims Assessment and Review that handles the residential. They just, many of them just filed bogus numbers just to get through the procedural. So we're going to look at that. And the last step we're going to take is, in addition to shortening the period that we're requesting the state legislature to do for the petitioner to file a notice of claim, in any case where we feel we have a strong position, we will engage with petitioner's counsel at an early stage and seek to have them withdraw or settle early, or in some cases, file our own note of issue and go to trial. That's a bit more expensive, because that means we're going to have to pay more money for, for appraisals. And I've already spoken to Denise, as we start our budget season, to include more money in our budget next year for appraisals so that we can go forward. So-
And I just want to reiterate that this is for commercial properties and not residential properties.
No, the residential properties already have to file within a year.
Within a year, so this is sort of-
So that's not for them.
Yeah, it's evening the playing field.
Yeah, but even residential properties, some of them are filing without, without merit, if you will, and we want to weed those out. People have a right to protest the value of their property, everybody does, but to take a property worth $800,000 and claim before the BAR that it's worth $10 is ridiculous. So that automatically gets stamp rejected, or not enough information, and then they go to court, and that takes up resources, because the assessor has to go to court and, you know, and argue these cases and try to settle these cases. The earlier that we do all of these things, the more efficient we will be, and we will save money in the long run, and it'll be fairer.
And I think it's important to note, because a lot of people only see, you know, the tax certs that we're not successful with, but I know that you've taken a head-on approach along with Jeff, along with Denise, before that Paul Noto, really-
And Dan.
And Dan Tartaglia has really helped facilitate it, and the entire Board of Assessment and Review, to streamline the process for the town and make sure there are no surprises and that we're doing the right thing, so I'm proud of that work.
Well, we've actually had two, we've had two withdrawals recently, in Portchester Westies and GNS, so both withdrawing their petitions, having seen the lighter side of it.
So I would just like to thank Gary and Jeff, and congratulate you on a very well-written resolution. I think it hits the high points, I think it lays out the case, and I also want to just reiterate that we are the leadership body for Rye Town, and I think it's important for us to be out there and advocate for this, and this clearly is a position that we're putting forward to the state legislature, which we want them to take up, because it is a state process that would have to be amended, nothing that we can do locally.
That is correct. Thank you, Tony. Any other comments? If not, did we have a motion and a second?
Not yet.
Not yet? A motion and a second, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Please call the roll, Hope.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Resolution to adopt a fair housing policy in the town of Rye. Debbie, you want to just touch briefly on what this is about?
Yes, the, as, as part of our participation in the Community Development Block Grant Program, we agree to support a certain set of policies that work to inclusive, being an inclusive community. When, in the process of the review that we had with the Department of Housing and Community Renewal for our 2015 CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, which enabled us to renovate Crawford Picnic Pavilion, Sensory Garden, and Playground, it was identified that while we had agreed to support the policies, we hadn't actually adopted a fair housing policy. That's what this is. This is a fair housing policy in which I'm committing to be the fair housing officer, and we will have educational materials and conduct educational programs that advocate for, for a fair, fair housing.
Great.
Questions? Not, motion and a second, please.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Resolution to adopt a town of Rye grievance procedure for discrimination based on disability, and Debbie, this is related to that, it's also dealing with CDBG, do you want to just briefly-
Correct, so the, the very same review identified that we were missing a policy and a procedure by which a grievance could be filed if a, a person with disabilities identified that there was a problem within our jurisdiction, and this defines their procedure, namely, that a grievance can be filed in writing with me, and I'm to mount an investigation promptly, bring it to a resolution, make a recommendation, and there's also an appeals process by which that same grievance can be brought to Supervisor Zuckerman.
Thank you. Questions? Motion and a second, please.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yep.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Resolution awarding a general construction contract to Crawley Holdings. This is, let me just, did we change the title of that? No, that's okay, it's just on the-
It was on the-
On the hyperdrive, okay. This is for general construction at the Crawford Community Center. This will be the largest single contract. This is for the, all of the general construction. It totals not more than $3,95,000. And just as a reminder, this is the second time this contract went out to bid. The first bids came in, we only had one bid, and we deemed that bid to be too high, so we went out to bid again, and we received several bids. This was the lowest bid, and in fact, was, I think, approximately half a million dollars less than the second bidder. So, that being said, may I have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
One question, this is bonded, correct? This is part of the band or the bond?
This is, this is, yes, the money's there, it's sitting there.
Right, okay. Because people are going to see that-
For that purpose.
Right.
For that purpose.
That's fine.
Yes, yes, the money, all of the money for the construction-
Yep.
-is, is part of the bond that was issued last year.
Good.
And we would have spent it already, but we had to go out again, and I'll, I'll get into, into some more of that with the next one as well, so-
Counselperson.
Yes, please call the roll.
Counselperson- Well, I, I also wanted to point out something I'm very happy about, which is, this involves a local company located in Portchester, and you'll see as the resolutions move forward with Crawford Mansion, there are a lot of local companies involved, which I think is absolutely fantastic, so.
I agree.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. The next resolution is for electrical services for the Crawford Mansion renovation, and this is an amount not to exceed $939,170. And the last time we went out to bid, we did not get any bids for electrical, and I believe this time we got a couple of bids for electrical, this was a low bidder, it's Labella Electric, who, as Lindsey points out, is also a local company. Any further discussion? Lindsey?
Nope, nope, I'm speechless.
I have a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, let me just state, these two contracts are two of five that will be issued. Again, we rejected the contracts for plumbing, sprinkler, and-
HVAC.
HVAC. And they are out to bid again, and the bids are due on August 30th. So hopefully, at our September meeting, we will be issuing those contracts, it's not essential that we call a special meeting. The main contract is the General Contracting Services, and just as a refresher, the building has been, the interior has been demolished and is ready for work. We've had some pictures, and I think, Debbie, we sent some pictures around of the interior showing the fireplace that we discovered, right? And, so-
I mean, Debbie, and I'm sorry to interrupt again.
Yes, yes, Lindsey.
Well, I just, as far as, and I know it's construction, so it's really unpredictable, but as far as the schedule now, we're kind of on target. Is that safe to say, or?
I would say we've had a moving target.
Yeah.
And I, I expect that we will be in there and using that facility certainly by next summer.
Fantastic.
Ideally. Mm-hmm. Well, ideally, we were, you know, when we started this process, we thought we would be in there at the first of the year. That's not going to happen, but it's more than likely to happen in the spring or in summer.
And the fact that we have local contractors doing some of the work, you know, they understand what is needed at Crawford, they're not coming to it and saying, what is this all about? Not, you know, they know what Crawford Park is all about.
I think local contractors is key.
Besides, if they don't do a good job, you know, we know where they live.
We can track them down.
Okay, next one is a resolution approving, a proposal for vending machines at Crawford Park. Debbie, what is this about, please?
Yes, if you recall, we passed a resolution with a vending machine company a number of months ago. It has been determined that this organization, it's not a good fit, and we have canceled that contract, and this is a replacement contract where actually the economics are a little bit better for us.
Any questions?
Yeah, what happened with the other company? What, what was the problem with them?
We, we had a number of issues that we attempted to resolve, both by email and telephone, and they were not able to respond.
Okay. Is this basically the same, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Is this basically the same contract as the, the other vending company?
Well, as I said, the economics are a little bit better for the town.
A little better, okay.
Yeah, but aside from that, it's, this doesn't cost the town anything, this is just how much we make.
Okay.
The, the other company had made some claims for healthy snacks and accessibility, and we have found that the, or healthy choices, the, the choices that have actually been sold did not match what was selected and promised, and there have been some service responses or failure to respond that has made this not an acceptable vendor for us.
Okay. So these vending machines are outside, are they in the pavilion?
Correct, they're outside.
Do we have flexibility in terms of what is put in the machine?
Yes.
Like, if we find, I, I'm just thinking it's outside, and kids are playing sports, and I don't know if we want to offer soda or maybe vitamin water instead, you know, just, just working in schools, I know we don't have soda in our, in our machines. I know it's open to everybody, and, you know, someone may want a soda, and I'm not saying do it now, I'm just saying if we have the flexibility to change it down the road, I think that'd be good to happen.
I, I'm, yeah, I, yes.
Good. We also have, in the pavilion, we have a brand-new water fountain, which also does bottle filler, and it's chilled, we, we put a chiller into. The supply house where we got the fountain from gave us a real good deal in a water chiller. So we got chilled water there also.
That's great.
But we don't make any money on that.
No, we don't make any money, no.
The water's free.
Water's free.
Water's free.
But it's there.
On the fourth, whereas it specifies that they'll have the soda, the iced tea, sport drinks, and water, so hopefully that covers-
Yep.
... what you would want, okay?
Yes. Did we have a motion? Motion and a second?
I'll make a motion.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please, Hope.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. The next resolution is regarding volunteers for Crawford Park, and Debbie, you want to talk about this one?
Yes, I'm very pleased to talk about this. You have in front of you and in your packets a flyer describing a 9/11 day of service, specifically, we have two 9/11 days of service. This is for volunteering at Crawford Park. As you may be aware, the, we, we haven't had a landscaping company engaged for the purpose of eliminating invasive vines that have crawled all over many of our trees and are strangling them. And we have put together a program with a local scout leader and a local master gardener who are experts in leading teams to eradicate invasive vines, and Bob Del Torto has established these programs along the Bronx River Parkway, along the Sawmill Parkway, in half a dozen communities around Westchester County, where he guides people in how to pull out those vines. And in fact, it, it really takes, occasionally, they've, they have some programs where the group meets every other weekend for a couple hours, just yanks out vines. So we have got two days set aside. Our local troop, Boy Scout troop 400, is taking this on with their leader, Mo Acevedo, and we are setting up a sign-up sheet on our town website for other people who would like to come and join, for younger volunteers. We have a wildflower garden which is overwhelmed with weeds that need to be pulled out, so for those who don't want to take on pulling up vines, we've got some lower, easier work to do. And so what we're doing is declaring Mo Acevedo and Bob Del Torto volunteers for Crawford Park. And if this works, then, and there's enthusiasm, perhaps we'll expand this program and perhaps get a group to do something every other Sunday or something.
I don't have a resolution. Do we have a resolution? We have a flyer.
Yeah, it was right before.
Yes.
Okay, I see it. I had to hit it twice.
See? Never fails. Never fails. Never fails.
I got it.
Debbie, do you know-
Excuse me, excuse me, Hope, do me a favor in the future. Where we have two things, put a line in between, because it says a space, because I, I'm not facile enough to realize that, you know, the resolution is separate from the flyer, so we could do that.
I'll do my best.
Thank you, Hope. Lindsey?
Yeah, Debbie, I know a few months ago, we had a presentation, we did the tree inventory-
Yes.
Crawford Park.
Yes.
And there was a significant amount of information regarding what trees were being harmed, you know, where the vines were located, et cetera. Have we given the volunteers access to that database so they could kind of plan it out ahead of time, or?
Not yet. I think that, certainly, I think the Bartlett is going to help us identify the most important spots, right? What are our priority locations? I think this is, this is a small bucket in a- Um, I think this is, um, this is a small bucket in a, a large well of...
Trees.
Vine removal that we need to do. I'm gonna mix my metaphors, I'm sorry, Tony. Uh, but, uh, it's, this is gonna be a first step to get rid of the, perhaps the easiest, the, the most important vines.
Because like I said, Bartlett provides us with this.
Great idea.
It's really a great tool.
Yep.
We can streamline it and...
Now, I, I imagine Mo's bringing the Boy Scouts there?
Yes.
What about the Girl Scouts?
Uh, we haven't reached out to them yet, but it's definitely part of the plan. And also to Carver Centers, to their youth group. Um, and any other, any other ideas that, that, uh, you have, please?
I think, you know, another, reach out to, um, to various religious institutions because they are, a lot of them are interested in, in environmental work and, and things like that.
And maybe the high schools so kids can get their community service.
I was just gonna say that, you know, the guidance departments at the high schools, um, you know, it's early in the school year, but they may be able to get the word out and kids are looking for community service hours, it's a great way.
Well, the school's got a whole P A system they can, you know, take the announcement.
It's a good time of year, September, the weather should be beautiful. It's not like asking them to go out in, uh, February.
I'll make a motion.
Second, please?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please help me.
Counselperson Jackson?
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi?
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Next resolution is contracting with, uh, N Y S I D, which is the New York State Industries for the Disabled, for document scanning, conversion, and access services for the town government. This is something we've worked on a long time, since I became supervisor and, um, and the council has, uh, moved forward with grant applications. We received a grant, a, a New York State Local Government Records Management Improvement Grant. Uh, we did not get it when we first applied, we did get it this time. Hope, how much is that grant for? Do you remember?
Fifty-three thousand.
Fifty-three thousand dollars for scanning, uh, all of, a list of documents that Hope has identified as part of our pro, project to eliminate paper in the town of Rye and save many, many trees.
Actually, the ledgers, we're not able to scan in-house, where a lot of other documents we can, so these are, we're referring, I'm referring to the marriage books and, which are permanent, uh, records and that's why I was grateful to get this grant.
Right, because we, we said, these are, these are, they do professional scanning.
Right.
They know how to handle government documents.
Right, and they're old and, and they know how to preserve.
They know how to handle, because some of our documents are quite old. Um, so, motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Counselperson Jackson?
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi?
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Uh, next resolution is, um, uh, entering into a contract with Pauling Holdings for the construction of a new stone wall and wrought iron fence at Getney Cemetery. Um, this has been, I would say the project has been festering for several years. The stone wall, which is bordering the Bello School in Mamaroneck, uh, is falling down. The wrought iron fence on the top is in disrepair. And basically it was caused by, um, trees that had been planted many years ago, the roots just pushing the stone wall out. So this is the responsibility of the town and, um, we had gone out for bid and Pauling Holdings, uh, was a little bitter. In fact, this again, we went out two times to bid because the, we deemed the first, um, round of bids to be excessive. And, um, this is, um, you know, this was more in line with, with some of the estimates. And, uh, Pauling Holdings, um, is the low bidder and also local, this is Louis Larissa, this is a local contractor. So, um, any questions?
Um, are the trees gonna be cut down that are along the wall?
They've been down.
They've been down. And the stumps, uh...
The stumps are being, have been removed.
Okay. I haven't been there in a while, so I don't...
I remember you and I were there a while ago.
Yeah, a while ago, yes. And the trees were up and there were stumps.
That's right, it's, it's all done, all done.
Okay, good.
I mean, this was a problem when I was at Bello's just a few years ago, so, um, but no, I, the wall's budding out and I, I think you guys have done a fantastic job and thank you, Debbie, because you really understand that time is of the essence and to get it all situated prior to the school year beginning and doing the best you can to work with the school district, so thank you very much.
Well, you, you're very welcome, but I, I have to say that our contractor and our engineer both understood that this absolutely had to happen before the kids were back in school.
Yeah, fantastic. Thank you.
And it is. All right, thank you. Motion in a second, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Counselperson Jackson?
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi?
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. And our, our last resolution to reschedule our September meeting from the eighteenth to the twenty-sixth of, uh, September? Did I say December meeting? September meeting. And, um, uh, that's because the September eighteenth is Rosh Hashanah and, um, so we, uh, we have checked with the council members and the twenty-sixth is available. And also that's gonna be in Rybrook, Debbie?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and that, and the Rybrook Hall is also available. So may I have a motion in a second?
Some of, sec.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our reports.
I'll be second, probably.
Um, the assessor, do you have a report for us, young lady?
Just a couple of brief notes. Good evening, everybody. Um, I apologize for not having been at the last two meetings. Uh, in June, the meeting, uh, coincided with Grievance Day, so I was a bit tied up, but not literally. Uh, for the July meeting, I was at the, um, Cornell Assessor Seminars in Ithaca, the annual, um, seminars. And the big news to report is that, uh, we're getting ready to kick off our revale. I'm anxious to get the project started and off the ground. I'm optimistic about the process and the outcome, so it's all good. Um, other than that, there's not much of anything significant to report, other than I'm happy to reiterate what Supervisor Zuckerman pointed out about the Westies and the G N S cases, cert cases that are being discontinued. We are continuing to push back on these cases and that do not have any merit and we are succeeding. Um, I'm also happy to report that the fi, uh, the number of filing of grievances is down approximately twenty percent. Uh, the residential grievances went from five thirty-three to four thirty-one and the commercial grievances, which then result in the tax certs, went from one fifty-two to one nineteen. Uh, the last little piece to report is that our office is almost paperless. Uh, nearly ninety-nine percent of the historic exemption applications and renewals are scanned and the current, um, exemption applications were probably about eighty percent scanned for this year. So that's really exciting for us because it really helps when you have to find something and just to have access to it in a, in a moment's notice, so it's really awesome. And that's my report for the evening.
Thank you, and I just wanna stress that, you know, going along with that, we're talking about, um, digitizing. All of our digital records are backed up, uh, in, in I think two or three different ways. And so it is actually more secure than being on paper because as our town veterans remember, we had a flood at Ten Pearl Street at one time and the paper records, many paper records were destroyed. That cannot happen with the digital records. And, um, and obviously easier to search and, and in the, in the end, less expensive.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Receiver?
Quite submitted, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Receiver. Madam Clerk, your report is submitted.
Yes, my report is submitted.
Nothing to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, can I add something? I'm sorry, when I, I spoke about the grant that we received, we also have appro, approximately one hundred eighty rolls of, uh, microfilm that we're converting to be digitized.
Right, into laser fish, yeah.
Got one quick question. Um, we have budget items to have some of the old ledgers rebound and stuff, do we have any more that are going?
We had four, um, registers done this year. I want, I would like to get as many done as possible while, um...
Yes.
Morton is still in business, 'cause he's, it, it's a trade that is almost...
Yeah, this guy, this guy that rebounds our books does everything by hand. Nothing is done by electricity, it's all done by hand. I happen to find this guy, what, six years, four, six years ago?
Yes.
And he does phenomenal work and everything's all hand-stitched. It's, it's just amazing to see the, the shop that he has.
Right, his dad originally did the work and then he took over and he just does fabulous work and he was highly recommended by, uh, Lindable from the archives.
What we, what we really should do is make a complete list of the books that need, we will rebind in the next year or so, because we should get as much of that done as possible. Because as you say, he may not be in business.
Well, that's why I'm concerned. I think we have about six more ledgers that...
So we should, we should make sure we, in our next budget sess, session, we should make sure that that's covered so we don't have to worry about that. All right, I mean, one of the things we're doing for, for public information, a lot of the paper, once it's digitized, we eliminate it. The shredder comes, we get rid of it. We've had the state come in and analyze what we, what we have and what we need to keep, if any, in paper and, um, when digitized, what can be eliminated. But there are certain books that I like to call archival.
Yes.
Minute books going back into the sixteen hundreds, okay? Doesn't matter, it's nice to digitize, but those books will be kept.
Thank you.
All the books of historical value, we will be keeping.
These are the ones that are all getting rebounded.
Right, and those will be rebounded.
I, I thank you for that.
Don't, don't worry, we're not throwing it out.
Okay, good. Very protective.
All right, may I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, wait, before we do that, any comments from the council people?
Eee...
Starting from here.
No.
You had the right idea.
Just wish everybody a happy Labor Day.
Well, that's right. Just have a few comments to make. I wasn't ready for that. I wanted to thank the county executive, George Latimer. Um, there's been an issue in the Rhine Neck area regarding Beaver Swamp Creek, um, highly polluted. It was built, the walls that protect the people that live adjacent to it, um, were built in the thirties, they're falling down. Um, it really needs attention. Gary and Tom came, um, Mayor Murphy of the Village of Mamaroneck was kind enough to host us there. Um, we had a very nice discussion and I've seen a lot of emails from his office following up. They're really taking this seriously and it's great. And I also wanted to thank Mayor Murphy again and the Village of Mamaroneck for their work with the Hillside Avenue Bridge. They've done a fantastic job, along with Debbie and Tommy have also been involved in it, but it's another exciting thing that we're moving forward, so, you know, we're working very closely with the Village of Mamaroneck, it's fantastic.
That, that's, um, Debbie, do you recall when, I think the design is virtually complete now, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so do you have any idea what the construction schedules, do you recall?
I believe that it has to be start...
September, September, we gotta have the, we have the sixty percent, I think the ninety percent is gonna be in September.
I think it's in the, um...
I think you're right and I, I think so, um, s- spring of twenty nineteen comes to my mind.
Yes. The, the constr, actual construction's gonna start in the fall of, uh, twenty nineteen. Sorry.
And that, um, we're gonna have to, during our budget season, I hate to bring this up, but during the budget season, we're going to have to plan how we will be paying our local share. This is a three-point-five million dollar project that's funded, I think it's ninety percent by the federal government.
Ninety-five percent.
Ninety-five percent by the federal government, but that still leaves a chunk that will be shared equally by the town of Mamaroneck, the Village of Mamaroneck, and the town of Rye. It may come, the estimate right now is about two hundred thousand dollars. So we will have to determine how we would do that and whether we'll be coming out of, you know, cash or whether we will be doing a ban for that. So that's to be determined later on in the process.
For what we gotta pay for that bridge, it's, it's a good, a real good deal.
Yeah.
Having the government pay for ninety-five percent of it and we split it with three co, three municipalities, it's, it's a good thing.
Could I just make one comment?
Sure.
Um, could we get, um, as we have in the past, a report, um, about the intern program in September or October?
It, it, it will be on the agenda for next month.
Okay, great.
We already spoke to Greg, we're gonna have a presentation. They're gonna come before us, we're gonna have a little, you know, cookies and something like that.
Good.
All right?
In fact, we'll, we'll be sending an invitation out to all the members of the council in case they want to attend.
Well, I think we're doing it at a meeting. That's the last thing, what Greg, Greg mentioned to me, I think we're doing it at a meeting.
Oh, I see, oh, I, not a meal, the way we did last time.
Right.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't understand that from the email mail.
Double check with him, he, I spoke to him yesterday.
Okay.